Present.
Howard Rosenberg.
Here.
Lisa Regerio.
Here.
Nick Smith.
Here.
I'm good. And our president, President Sherry, is our volunteer here.
Coach.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Coach. I'm ready to go in. We'll have a motion to adopt the agenda.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried unanimously. Let the record show. Okay, public comment. If you want to make public comment, please fill out one of these pretty yellow sheets. John Epalito.
My name is John Epalito. I have four kids in the schools and I'm a former K-12 teacher. And what I wanted to talk about briefly was the student data mining. And I know the board hasn't been real eager to learn about it, from what I can tell. There is one trustee who is starting to learn about the student data mining. And I understand, he may be the only one with children in the district, and I understand his children will not be taking the S-Back exam. I think the board owes it to the parents in Washoe County to let them know that they can opt out of the S-Back test. No one's going to lose money. The State Department of Ed eventually is going to have to back off of the one-star status. The schools in Incline will have over 5% opt-out. Many other schools will also have over 5% opt-out. The least this board can do is let the parents know they can opt out of the S-Back. That is one of the ways that really helps facilitate the student data mining. I have some handouts here for the board. We have had a couple meetings lately. One of them is posted on NevadaTrends.com, and then there's another one coming up in Fallon in a couple weeks. So here's some flyers. If anybody out here would like the flyers, I also have more. But this is a huge issue. In my opinion, this is the one issue that could negatively impact these kids the rest of their lives. This student data that's happening now, this student data mining in Nevada and many other states, is pre-K to the workforce. People are calling it cradle to grave. And this board owes it, and I'm making it easy. You guys just aren't showing up. This board owes it to 60,000 kids to learn more about it. I can't even get the superintendent to forward me the opt-out form for the S-Back testing. So we created our own. Please learn about it and please let parents know they can opt out of the test.
Thank you, Mr. Epalito. Any other comments? I don't have any other cards, so we'll...
I didn't know about the yellow card.
Okay. Come on up and then fill one out after. Please address with your name for the record.
My name is Stacy.
There's a button up there.
Hello. My name is Stacy Griffin, and I have two kids in this school district, one of which is elementary school age, and she's zoned for Brown. And I've gone through Brown with my older one for six years. And I think Brown is arguably the most overcrowded school in the district, from what I understand. If not the most, it's up there. And this meeting time at 8:30 precludes any of the parents at Brown from attending this meeting. I suggest that all subsequent meetings about this topic are held at 10 o'clock so that elementary school aged children's parents can attend. I'm lucky I have a neighbor that was able to take my daughter today, but most of the parents are not allowed to attend this meeting because of the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the consent agenda items, 2.02 through 2.06. The chair will entertain the motion. Is there any, anyone wants to pull? Okay, agenda, motion?
I move that the Board of Trustees approves consent agenda items 2.02 through 2.06.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signal. It's carried unanimously. Okay, on to agenda item 3.01, "Presentation by the Cunningham Group Regarding Their Independent Review and Initial Analysis of Current Projected School Building Capacity and Enrollment Growth, Possible Utilization of Alternative Capacity Models, Rebalancing of Attendance Zones, and Their Recommendation to Manage Future Growth and to Provide Increased Student Equity." This is for information and discussion only. Mr. Etchard is the presenter.
Hi, Pete Etchard, Chief Operating Officer for the Washoe County School District. And I'm pleased to introduce this morning's presenter on this item, but I want to give a little background first. Washoe County School District engaged the Cunningham Group to provide an independent review of our existing capacities, enrollment, and provide an assessment of the district's ability to accommodate projected growth going forward. The district also requested that the Cunningham Group analyze alternative capacity models, including the utilization of leased space, commercial space, and also the possible rebalancing of the district's attendance zones. Being so close to this issue, we believe that there was a significant value to having someone with nationwide experience independently review our district and the growth and overcrowding issues that we are facing. I definitely believe that they have gone above and beyond our expectations in providing the analysis and recommendations that you will hear this morning. The Cunningham Group is an award-winning international architectural design and planning firm headquartered in Minneapolis, Minnesota, and among their offices is one in Las Vegas, Nevada. Tim Defoe is the President and Chief Executive Officer for the Cunningham Group. Tim previously worked with the Washoe County School District in 2004 and '05 as part of America's Schoolhouse Council and to help the district develop a district-wide capital improvement master plan as part of the 2002 Bond Rovover Program. When I met Tim in mid-August when he came to Reno to begin this work, I was absolutely amazed at his knowledge of the Washoe County School District. So he's definitely been able to hit the ground running with the information you're going to hear today. So it is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Tim Defoe of the Cunningham Group.
Thank you for being with us today.
Okay. Thank you, President Mayor, members of the board, and Superintendent Davis. I appreciate having the opportunity to be here today and to share with you just some of our thoughts as we've looked at some of the capacity and enrollment projections that you're dealing with here in the district. As Mr. Etchard said, I worked with the district back in 2004 and 2005 when we did some planning work through America's Schoolhouse Council in looking at some of the last time that the district was dealing with significant growth. Obviously, a lot's changed since then, but in many ways, a lot is still the same. So just to give you a little bit of a context of how we... Oops. See, there we go. Kind of how we approach this. So we came, as Mr. Etchard said, we came in mid-August and we spent about two days here in the district. And we sat down and we took all of the enrollment projections that were developed for the district at that time by the capital planning group. And we just kind of went through in-depth each of the schools at the elementary, middle school, and high school level. And we just tried to understand kind of what some of the growth patterns that we were seeing in the numbers. So the analysis that we did, I want to really preface by saying it was done pretty much, I don't want to say in a vacuum, but it was done in a very controlled and concise way. There wasn't, it wasn't focused on a lot of input. It was really just looking at data and trying to understand what the data was telling us. Then, in context with looking at the overall capacity of each of the schools, we tried to assess, given the growth patterns that we were seeing in the data, how would that translate then into some level of capital investment or overall accommodation of the growth over the long term? Now, also, I also want to be very clear that when you're looking at 10-year projections of growth, they're just projections. And the margin of error when you're looking at data streams that far out can be very significant. So while what I'm about to present to you this morning represents a solution or a set of recommendations, I want to preface it with the fact that, you know, it really is based upon conditions that are changing on a fairly dynamic basis. So just beginning to talk about, so again, we did use existing data. We looked at the overall map of all of the existing zones. We did take each of the grade level programs independently, so elementary school, middle school, high school, and try to assess what could be done within the context of each of them. Our responsibility was come in and say, okay, every school shouldn't be at 100% or should have no more than 100% capacity. Now, recognizing that that isn't always possible to keep every school at less than 100% capacity, we set that sort of as a guiding framework, understanding that there was going to have to be, there were going to be situations where some schools were going to be above that 100% level. But we would try as best we could to balance the district across. This was really an effort that was focused on accommodating enrollment, but it wasn't only, our only focus in looking at this. We did try to actually understand what some of the other implications that enrollment and capacity are going to have in the district as a whole, and try to balance that with some other academic and equity issues as As you all know, growth is going to be, need to be accommodated in stages because this is a significant level of investment that the district would have to make over a timeframe. And dealing with that is going to take a fairly balanced approach to accommodating that growth. These are just a starting point. We don't purport that this is the answer for the district. It is one answer. It is one way of looking at the enrollment and capacity data and coming up with solutions that resolve that. But it should just simply be the beginning of a discussion. So that's part of the reason why we're here today. We also believe that over the longer term, there needs to be a broader discussion about how this information or how these recommendations could be distributed throughout the, throughout the district. We did provide a cost analysis, and I'll go through that at the end of the presentation today, and it's in the back part of our report that we submitted. That is really just for scale purposes only. I don't purport to know all of the construction costs here in Reno. We know generally what schools cost, and we know generally what schools cost in the Nevada marketplace, as we do have a Las Vegas office. We have a California office. So we know the west, the western part of the country and what the costs, construction costs are out here. But in dealing with a 10-year timeframe, you're always looking at only from the standpoint of overall scale of the total investment. So I'm going to start today with a discussion about the high schools. Now, I'm going to show you a series of maps, and each of these maps are color-coded. And for the simplistic purposes of the presentation, the darker the red, that means the higher the capacity of that school zone is. So as you go through this, keep that in mind. So on the high school level, if we look at sort of the current situation the district is dealing with, and again, we updated these numbers to actually reflect the preliminary count day numbers that we received from the district a couple of weeks ago. So they're relatively representative of what enrollments are at at the existing schools. You can see that, you know, obviously, the Spanish Springs and Demonte Ranch areas of the district are dealing with already some significant crowding issues in the schools as they're in that 90 to 100% capacity for the schools that are out there. And you see that McQueen and Worcester are also starting to deal with some higher levels of enrollment. As we move five years out into 2019 and 2020, you can see that, again, we really start to see significant overcrowding issues at Spanish Springs and Demonte Ranch. And Worcester jumps into that over 100% level. McQueen's getting kind of right up, bumping right up against the barriers there. But you're also starting to see some pressure put on the center, the inner-city schools of Hugg and Sparks. And also, you know, overall, as we get in the outer side of the, the outer edges of the district, we're seeing continued growth and enrollment development there. Why, this doesn't advance? Yeah, it went up. So then, let's look out 10 years, and you can see that across the district, we're dealing with really significant overcrowding across every one of the high schools practically. While there does appear to be some, some capacity in the Reno high school zone, that isn't necessarily, you know, that could, that could change fairly rapidly because they're right in that, right about 90% capacity. So significant pressure across all of the high schools. So while the growth is fairly dispersed, you know, it is somewhat isolated, or not isolated, but focused on the periphery. If we were to rezone the high schools, even go back to maybe the five-year projection and rezone all the high schools to try and distribute the population, it really wouldn't do any good because the growth would be such that we would run out of capacity fairly rapidly after you did the rezone. In addition, the overall number of students relative to the capacity of all of the high schools in the district, there's just, there are more students than there are seats in all of the high schools at that point in time. One of the things we were asked to look at was online schools and whether or not online education could be an opportunity to relieve some of the crowding. In general, online is not going to provide a huge benefit in terms of capacity relief, enrollment relief, because enrollment in online programs is a fairly minor component of most academic curriculums. In addition, even although most of the curriculum may be online, there tends to be periods of time where the students do need to come and have teacher interaction, one-on-one teacher interaction, and that's going to require space someplace. So online will not provide a huge benefit. In addition, we are also asked to look at, you know, using commercial space. And certainly, that is one of the, one of the characteristics of the high school level on the charter programs is to use commercial space for high schools. Again, you generally are going to be dealing with space constraints that are going to limit the value that using commercial facilities for high schools is going to bring to you. On top of that, commercial, commercial construction's very different than public school construction. Systems, structural systems are not designed to meet the same seismic criteria as a public school. As you know, Reno is a fairly active seismic zone, and schools have a much higher requirement when it comes to seismic, seismic performance of the actual building relative to commercial buildings. And that's only because schools have kids in them, and that's something that's put at a higher level. Not to mention that schools tend to have the same group of people in them over time. In addition, mechanical systems, electrical systems, all of the base building systems that you see in a commercial building are not generally as robust as what you see in public school education facilities because they're really designed for a quick turnaround in terms of commercial tenants. And so the systems are replaced on a more frequent basis than they are in public school construction. So we did look at that. Again, it won't provide a significant amount of relief because, in general, it's going to, it's going to accommodate a couple of hundred kids at a time, given the most of the commercial space that's out there. And that isn't going to provide significant relief for the high school level. So, but as you can see on the maps, the bulk of the issue really is 10 years out in the future. And that's when we're dealing with a lot of the student coming in. So what are our recommendations? Well, again, we're basing it on the 10-year model. So bringing up that 10-year map again, you can see the dark areas, the dark reddish-brown areas where most of the bulk of the crowding is. Our recommendation is that we actually, the district actually construct three new schools. One of those new schools would be out in the periphery, and that would be in the North Valleys area to deal with growth that's happening up in the North Valleys. The other two new schools, we are actually recommending that you build them in the center of the city, which is in the, in the Sparks area, and you actually combine Hugg and Sparks into one brand-new school. And the reason to do that is that Hugg and Sparks, as in schools themselves, are the smallest, two of your smallest high schools in the district, and also two of your older facilities that have some significant facility challenges to them. Building a newer, larger-capacity high school that would combine those two schools brings greater resources to those students who are in the core of the district, newer resources that are equitable with what's happening on the outer edges of the district. But also allows for consolidation of those two into one new school. Now, as you can see, it didn't, the color still remains sort of that dark brown. But that's a little deceiving because the numbers, it's, it's over 100% capacity, but it's just a little bit over 100% capacity. And again, I want to caution that this is 10 years out. These are 10-year numbers. And the margin of error in the projection 10 years out actually could eliminate that overcrowding that is shown on the, on the projection right now. It could also go the other way, depending if growth goes the other way. But that results in a whole different set of issues. The last new high school that we're recommending is that you actually replace Worcester High School, but you build a new high school, a new, larger high school down closer to Demonte Ranch. Now, in doing that, you actually can rezone that southern area of the high schools. Demonte Ranch, Worcester, and Reed, Reed, not Reed, Gerlock.
Galena.
Galena. Can't read it from here. Yeah, I'm like, gee, I'm going, I'm running through all the schools in my head. But you could take, you could take students from that Demonte Ranch, Galena, Worcester zone and sort of rebalance those boundaries, pulling some of the students out of Demonte Ranch and putting them into a new, larger Worcester High School.
I missed the part, where did you say the new Worcester would be located?
Kind of the southern end of what is currently the Worcester High School zone. It's not all the way into, into the, in the valleys, but there's some land, it's a ranch.
Butler Ranch?
Butler Ranch, yeah, that area of the Worcester zone.
Near Donner Springs Elementary School.
Yeah. There's some land out there that's large enough to accommodate a new high school and would allow for sort of capturing some of the north part of Demonte Ranch and moving it into the new school. In addition, we're recommending that you add on to Demonte Ranch so that you increase the capacity of Demonte Ranch. Currently, it's about 1,800 student capacity. It was designed to be a 2,400-student school, so add on, make it a 2,400-student school. There may still need to be some portables that are dealt with that out there, but generally speaking, that picks up a lot of the capacity issues that are in the south. That leaves you with the existing Worcester High School. It leaves you with the existing Hugg High School. It leaves you with the existing Sparks High School. Those are still valid facilities that the district can use. And some of the recommendations, as we move forward, we'll talk about that. With Hugg specifically, you know, what we envision with that is that that school could be repurposed a number of different ways. Certainly, there could be district-level functions that could be put into that facility. It could be repurposed into specialized high school programs that might be focused on more urban types of issues, whether that's Urban Skills Academy, or it could be police or justice or some sort of programs like that. Or you could actually take and either create a secondary AEC...
ACT.
ACT, yeah. Program, I'm trying to remember all this stuff.
Is there a...
Create a secondary program like that in that facility. So the facility remains there. It still has opportunities to be used. And again, that will help deal with some of the capacity issues. We don't foresee that there's any reason that those facilities can't be part of the solution. We didn't spend a lot of time looking at that. Now, two of the problems that you still see on this is that we still have an issue out at McQueen. And McQueen is very difficult to deal with from a capacity issue. The school site is very small. We really can't add on to that building at all because there's just no site without acquisition of additional property. And, you know, it's probably maxed out on the number of portables that can be on that, on that site right now. So that's not going to get a lot of capacity there. It's possible you could look at the McQueen-Reno boundary and look at some rezoning of that boundary. However, Reno High School, depending on which projection you're looking at, Reno High School could also be facing, sort of bumping up against that capacity number as well. So short of building another new high school out on the western side of the district, which there isn't a lot of land or a lot of places to do that, that, that's going to be a more difficult area to deal with. Now, again, if you looked at Hugg as an opportunity to, the existing Hugg is an opportunity to create programs that might draw students, you could relieve some of the crowding issues through a program in that facility. So that's the high school level. Are there any questions with regards to the...
Sparks High School, if you build a brand-new third time for new Sparks High School, what happens to the old high school?
So we deal with that in the next set of recommendations with the middle school. We actually talk about repurposing that as a middle school.
And Worcester, sell the Worcester if you build a new Worcester?
Again, we, we deal with that in the elementary school level. We, repurposing, but again, all of these facilities are, they're, they're still have value to them. The challenge is, you know, what, how do you balance what the need in the district is with the value of the facility? We talk about Worcester as at the elementary school level. We talk about Sparks at the middle school level. We think that these make some sense, to make some investment in those buildings for those types of programs. At the same point in time, there probably would still be additional capacity in those buildings through some specialized programs that you could accommodate as well.
Yes.
Thank you, President Mayor. This is very informative, and thank you for all your work on this. And the fact that you can remember all the schools without having anything in front of you is pretty impressive because I have a hard time doing that as well, still. One question I had about what you said about the Demonte Ranch High School currently, to increase it to 2,400, how would that happen? Because my understanding is it's also fairly at capacity from what you had up before.
Right.
So are you, is the, is the vision to build out?
Yeah.
I know the property is fairly large. So, so could you say more about that?
Yeah, the existing school, when it was designed, it's the same model as Spanish Springs and North Valleys, the same design concept as those two schools. And it was designed to have an additional expansion of the classroom wings that would add capacity to that school. The core facilities, the cafeteria, the gyms, all of that stuff, was structured for a 2,400-student school. So it's really just adding classrooms.
Interesting perspective on the Hugg and McQueen issue because I think it was 1985 or...
I never can, yes. 1985 or thereabouts, where the students who were at Hugg that lived in northwest Reno then all transferred into that new school. And of course, that area has grown exponentially. But in the doing of that, that pretty much turned Hugg High School into a low socioeconomic school, which has really never been totally turned around. I mean, that's all of what we're talking about here when we talk about equity issues.
Yes.
Throughout the core of the Reno-Sparks area. And so I'm very happy to see that you've got that as one of your highest priorities. And so I'm very happy to see that you've got that as one of your highest priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to the middle schools. So currently, in the middle schools, again, you can see the, some of the pressure on some of the outer middle schools. That, you know, we're really trying to understand where that growth is coming. The middle schools have an interesting problem that's associated with them. There's currently a bubble in the elementary schools that's in the second and third grade. And that bubble is moving through the elementary schools. And you're going to see that bubble hit the middle schools in a couple of years. So while there is, you know, some pressure at the middle-level program right now, there, you know, there aren't significant pressures. But as you move to the five-year level, you can see there's a big change in what happens in enrollment, again, especially out at the outer edges of the district. That's that bubble of kids from the second, in second and third grade right now moving into the middle schools. So there's still a little bit of pressure on some of the edge district, in the edge schools of the urban core. But really, you're dealing with mostly Mendive and Billinghurst and DePoli and?
Pine.
Pine, yeah, where most of the issues are at. So that Spanish Springs area, kind of the South Valleys area, are all really feeling the pressure. So going then 10 years out, you actually see some relief happening on the western side of the district. Still have a lot of pressure at DePoli, still a lot of pressure at Mendive. Shaw is still up there in terms of its enrollment, but some relief at Billinghurst and a little bit at Pine. So as we looked at it, when we, I'll kind of talk through all these points already. So as we looked at it, and we've looked at the recommendations, we looked at it at that five-year level because that's where the greatest pressure on the middle-level programs is at. And so our recommendations really, again, play off a little bit what was happening with the high schools because, as I said, we proposed three new middle schools. And part of that would be actually repurposing the Sparks High School into a middle school. So we're calling it a new middle school, but it's an existing facility. The other two new middle schools would be up in Spanish Springs and in the South Valleys area. And again, that's just, there's, the growth is, in those areas is just significant. There's no way to deal with it other than to build new schools down in those areas. The challenge that we run into is, as you can see, Billinghurst is still pressured. Mendive is still pressured. And even although the Sparks, which is Sparks is replacing two existing middle schools, while it's shown as sort of at that 100% plus capacity, that's because we based it on a 1,400-student model. Now, if we actually use the existing facility to its full capacity, which is 1,500 students, that actually would go below 100% capacity. So the existing school would accommodate all of those students without any issues. The reason we use 1,400 is because the district's model for middle schools is 1,400 students. So we were just being consistent. But the existing facility has the capacity for 1,500, probably even a little more when you look at it from a middle-level program.
Could I underrep you for just a second? Your definition of a middle school, is it six, sevens, and eights, or is it sevens and eights?
Well, again, the district has actually multiple programs. You have five eights, you have six eights, and you have seven eights. We define a middle school as six through eight. We didn't, when we looked at this analysis, we did not look at it from the standpoint of grade-level distribution. We looked at it purely from the standpoint of enrollment. So we took the number of kids existing in that school as it's defined today. So if the school is a six, seven, eight program, then we kept it as a six, seven, eight program. If it was a five eight, we kept it as a five eight. With regards to Sparks and the two new middle schools, we didn't define whether those were five eight, six eight, or seven eight programs.
But talking about the bubble, the third-grade bubble, it'd be nice to know if we should do this middle school as that bubble goes into sixth grade.
Well, our recommendation actually would be, if you build these schools, that you build them as five eight programs.
Five eight.
Now, that's sort of, that still needs study in terms of make sure that, of the three new schools that we're recommending, that that would work from an enrollment capacity issue. But academically, our belief is that the five eight model is the best model from the middle level, at the middle level.
And we already have one?
Yes.
That way, so?
Because Shaw is a five eight, right?
No, it's Cold Springs.
Cold Springs, yeah. And it was one of the North Valleys ones. So, so again, we, and also, I want to caution too, that this is the five-year, these are the five-year numbers. So what you're seeing for the pressures in those districts that are still shown in the dark reddish-brown color, as we move to the 10-year numbers, those are relieved because the students are no longer in those schools. And, and again, some of the other, other highlights that you're seeing on the map, there would be lower, lower-pressure numbers as you move into the 10-year model based upon the projections that we were, we were giving. Now, we did look at actually Billinghurst, Trainer, and Clayton, and in partially in an effort to try and address some of the issues at Billinghurst. And if you look at the three schools together, and if you look at making some investment in Clayton and Trainer in terms of expansion or remodeling or just sort of rebuilding those schools a little bit, that we could look at rezoning those three schools in some capacity that would potentially deal with some of the capacity issues that you're seeing mostly at the Billinghurst level by bringing some of those Billinghurst kids inside the boundary of the existing Clayton. But to do that, it really, it's a much deeper analysis that would have to be done in terms of what kind of expansion can we do to those three schools, or two schools, to accommodate the growth. But we believe that there is something that could be done there.
You know, oh, go ahead, Dr. Taylor.
I'm glad you mentioned Billinghurst, Trainer, and Clayton. I was just going to ask that question. So your recommendation, or I guess to say, your analysis shows that with, with the amount of a little bit of reconstruction or remodel or expansion for those three schools, and then once you get past the bubble, that would relieve Billinghurst. I mean, that's, because Billinghurst is?
Bursting.
Yes.
Yeah, it's bursting.
So with that, you think that would solve that? And that's part of that is based upon the bubble?
Part of it's based upon the bubble because if you remember from the 10-year projection, Billinghurst moves below the 100% capacity number, but still is in that 95 to 100%. But Clayton and Trainer have some capacity that could be accommodated. Again, with some, what we would say would be targeted additions, a targeted investment in Clayton and Trainer. And then looking at the boundary level, boundary areas on sort of the western edge of each of those districts, you could relieve some of that crowding at Billinghurst.
Any more ideas on the relieving Billinghurst? Because they still stay pretty high even after the bubble.
Yeah. Short of adding on to the school, which there isn't really sight to do that, you know, it really does come back to adding a, at past 10 years, adding another school potentially on the western side of the district. Again, we limited our review to just to 10 years because anytime you get up beyond 10 years in these projections, they're just so unreliable. There's so much potential error in the, in the numbers. You can't really make a plan based on that. So we did limit to 10 years.
Thank you.
So to go back, you said Sparks High School would then become a middle school?
Yeah, that's our recommendation, yes.
And then what's going, Dilworth would still be a middle school? And Sparks would still be middle schools?
Dilworth would be changed into an elementary school. As would?
Sparks.
Yeah, Sparks would also become an elementary school.
And they have elementary schools right across the street.
And those, again, I'll get into that in the elementary school discussion, but those, again, those existing facilities could be repurposed for specialized programs. Or if enrollment is such that they're needed, they can continue to serve as middle, or as elementary schools in that area.
So you could use Dilworth and Sparks Middle as elementary and then program Lincoln Park and Risley?
Yes. And I'll talk about that in the elementary schools because Dilworth and Lincoln, or Dilworth and Sparks are bigger than the traditional elementary schools. So though I'm not a big proponent of building or creating large elementary schools because I do think there are issues that come when you have too many elementary students in a school, there is greater capacity than the standard elementary school model in the district in those two schools because they're designed as middle schools. So they're bigger to start with.
So you're going to, in this plan, two middle schools, one in the south and one in the north?
Two new middle schools.
Two new.
And then?
And a remodel of Sparks Middle. Why don't you add another fourth one for the west?
Because really, we don't see, the level investment required for a fourth middle school, we don't see the need in the numbers right now. Again, as I said, we can, through some targeted investment in some of the other schools in the district, we can relieve some of that crowding issue, which is really a five-year issue because going up to 10 years, the enrollment drops. So there wouldn't necessarily be a need for another 1,400-student middle school in the district.
And I really feel that we need to look at the educational validity of five through eight, six through eight, and?
I agree.
And make an educational decision as to what we're going to do before we start plunking these down, so to speak. You know, because it would change with five to eight. And it's very successful where we do it now, but will it be in the future six to eights, really a nice middle school? But that's for our curriculum department to really decide what way they're going to give services to five through eight.
And I would say that across the board for all these recommendations, again, our, the scope of our analysis was really data analysis. It was looking at enrollment capacity and how do we solve?
Yeah.
One very small component of the problem the district is facing. We absolutely would agree that you need to look at, across the spectrum of all of these recommendations, academically, what are we trying to achieve? How do you try, how do you integrate existing programs as well as potential needs across all spectrums of the student body in each of these recommendations?
Well, I'm glad to hear you say that because you're not a curriculum person.
You're not a curriculum person.
But you can put a lot of weight on our curriculum department in coming up with a plan, so.
Thank you, President Mayor. So one of the schools, you're going to, you plan on relieving DePoli with building a new school out in the South Meadows area. So where in particular?
Don't really know. Again, it's probably somewhere in the area of, where we're showing it actually is, is south of Pine. There are, there is some land, and I don't know the exact area. Mr. Gabika and I talked about it, but I can't remember exactly the street. But there is a parcel west of 580, kind of in the south part of the Pine District that was targeted as a, as a middle school in the past.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Oh, Dr. McClure.
And I could ask this at the end of the elementary school presentation as well, but as you mentioned the bubble and then you anticipate a decline, I kind of wondered, I know we're in the midst of, and we have a contract with regional planning for it, as you probably are aware, for residential housing study. That's going to give us different numbers or probably, hopefully, clearer numbers. How much do we know about whether those numbers will, how will they impact this analysis that you've done? Do you have any sense of that at all? Is it going to change a lot of things?
Well, I, demographic projections, as I said earlier, are just that, the projections. Now, with that, I would say that your demographic group in the district here has done a really good job at really doing some solid analysis on what those potential housing developments could look like and what the impact of the district would be. I think Randy has done just a tremendous job of getting his hands around all of those numbers. And as best as he has been able to, he's incorporated a lot of that even without the study from the regional planning group. Now, again, it's 10 years out, so it's really hard to say with confidence that that's what the numbers are going to be. They're going to change. And how they change is going to depend a whole lot on what's going to happen between now and 2025. And between now and 2025, if there's another recession, if there's another, you know, bust in the, in the economy, that's going to have a significant impact on what's going to happen in that development and growth overall. What's happening, you know, with the new production facilities for Panasonic, for Tesla, those are going to have significant impacts on the district and outside the district as well, frankly. So as best as he's been able to, Randy has incorporated a lot of that in the numbers, and we used those numbers when we did this analysis. So will it change? Yes. How, I don't know.
Dr. McClure?
Figure out how to do this. That the Epic study done with Edon utilized the 1.7 plus a 2.4 percentage, and we determined to go with a more conservative?
Yes.
Projection, at least in the near future.
And what I would say is that we did use the 1.7 as the basis for all of our analysis. If you go to the 2.4, in essence, everything that we're talking about in this just moves up five years because the growth is going to be that much. Now, there was a 5% study that's out there as well, 5% growth rate, and the district has experienced 5% growth in the past. If it's a 5% growth rate, all bets are off. It's a whole different animal that you're going to have to deal with. So we did not, and we didn't feel it was valuable for us to look at that level of growth because it's too speculative.
Yes.
And I appreciate that, the numbers from Epic and familiar with those. And I think also the residential housing study, what that's going to help us do is be able to identify where that growth may look different in different parts of the region. So it's not just 1.7 across the board. It's going to help us see, maybe this region has planned developments that's going to result in a 5% increase in the number of residents. And this area is not going to have very much at all. So that's why I'm bringing it up because I think those numbers may actually help us get even clearer on what we anticipate in terms of projections and school enrollment in different areas of the county.
Yeah.
Any other questions on middle school? Okay.
Okay, moving on to the elementary schools. All right, so the elementary schools. Certainly, this is one of the areas where there's kind of the biggest pressure at the moment in the south. As was stated earlier, Brown is facing some significant pressure. You know, the North Valleys are facing significant pressure. There are some pockets kind of in the middle that are facing some pressure, but really, as you move out to that five-year point, you can really start to see a lot more pressure being put on a number of the schools on the outer edges of the district, but it's also starting to push into the middle. And as we get to the 10-year projection, you see significant growth across almost all of the district, with the exception of at the core. And so that's part of what I want to address and part of what we looked at. The historic model for dealing with this kind of growth has just been build new elementary schools. And you're chasing that growth constantly, and you're kind of always behind the eight ball on that. And certainly, that is one model that could be moved forward. We looked at it from a very different perspective and said, you don't have the capital to really deal with that kind of growth from a pure new-school capacity issue. So the existing schools have capacity built into them if you just look at using them differently. And so we really focused on, as we move into the recommendations, focused on taking the existing periphery schools, as I'll call them, and moving them to a year-round, multi-track program. That adds about 25% capacity to each of those facilities because you're adding a full-grade-level spectrum to each of the facilities. And that's taking care of most of the growth that you have on the outer edges of the district. Now, there is some issue with, you know, moving to multi-track year-round may not necessarily add a perfect 25% capacity because it doesn't always work out that nice and clean because based on the number of students that have IEPs or based on the number of students that are in specialized programs. students that are in specialized programs, you know, that changes the amount of students that you can effectively add to each of the schools on the multi-track program. But at a, just a pure analytical level, because that was our, our, our scope of work, was really to look at this from the pure data analysis. That's how, the bulk of what we dealt with, the elementary level. Now, there still is some need for something, some new elementary school, and there is probably a couple of different areas it could be. It could be in the South Meadows, it could be in the North Valleys. You know, we didn't really make a determination as to where that, that new elementary school would be, but we did accommodate for one new elementary school in the analysis. We focused pretty heavily on reinvesting in the core of the district. And the primary purposes for that are, all of your elementary schools in the core of the district are the smallest. They're dealing with the oldest buildings that have some of the biggest facility needs issues. They have the largest percentage of students with IEPs, the largest percentage of students who are free and reduce lunch, you have the largest percentage of students who are English-language learners. So, there's a lot of real academic issues that need to be dealt with in those core city schools, and we think that there needs to be some significant reinvestment in that core city school area to bring those schools up to the same level that the other schools in the district have. In addition, by doing that, we can actually accommodate some additional enrollment in those schools. So, that, that begins to take some of the pressure off some of the outer edges of, of the, the district. How that gets done, I mean, that's a fairly in-depth study that would have to be done to figure out how all that gets done and how, where we could add capacity in the core, but just in looking at big broad brushstrokes, we think there are opportunities to do that. Now, Verdai on the west edge kind of sits out there, and it's still sort of, it's an island, and it's really hard to deal with Verdai by rezoning, because it's not easy to rezone kids into that school. So, that's why you see that that one sort of stays that dark, dark red color. But overall, we tried to address as much of the capacity issues at the elementary schools we could through the, again, some targeted capital investment, but also looking at a much more intense use of existing facilities across the district. Now, this is where, again, Rizley and Lincoln Park moved to Sparks and Dilworth, and Sparks and Dilworth are bigger than a traditional elementary school in the district, so they could accommodate more students. That needs to be looked at from an academic perspective and whether or not that's the right academic response. We, in, for the purposes of this study, we did not reuse Rizley and Lincoln Park as elementary schools. They could continue to operate as elementary schools. We looked at them more from the standpoint they could become specialized programs that might draw students from around the district as opposed to neighborhood schools. Could go really either way on that. We also looked at the existing Worcester High School, and we recommended in the report that the existing Worcester High School could be used as a specialized academic program at the elementary level as well. Being that there's an elementary school across the street, you know, it didn't seem to make sense to just turn Worcester into an elementary school, and that would be a really big elementary school. But there is opportunity there, again, to sort of relieve the southern, pressure at the southern end of the district by creating a program that would draw students into, into that facility. So, while the, you know, the capacity issue isn't entirely dealt with, there is still capacity for dealing with some of the enrollment at the elementary level by making these moves that we've recommended here.
But you know, when you look at Worcester, it's, that's a pretty valuable piece of property-
It is.
...commercial-wise, did you look at maybe selling that property to help fund the, some of these others?
We didn't do that, and we, you know, we don't really have an understanding of the real estate market in Reno, so we, we couldn't make a recommendation on that. And historically, school districts around the country, when they've sold off facilities, they usually didn't come to regret it in the future, because they need them in the future. Populations ebb and flow, and that's just the way that it works. So, we wouldn't necessarily recommend that the district sell off Worcester, but yes, you're right, it is a valuable property.
Dr. McClure?
On the inner core, whoops. On the inner core area schools, in order to put an investment into those schools, how large of facilities are you talking about for each of these very small, or much smaller? Bernice Matthews is not a small school, but the rest of them are throughout that neighborhood.
Yeah, we, what we would really see happening in the inner core is investment in really specialized program in the facility. So, building small group rooms and more, more of the specialized academic program rooms, so that you free up existing classrooms that are right now being used for eight kids, when it shouldn't really be used for 25 students. So, by, by doing some targeted additions to these buildings that build sort of this specialized program space, whether that's for ELL or for IEP students or any of those kinds of programs, plus some, you know, targeted investment in some of the bigger, like the gym-type spaces or the cafeteria spaces, so that they can accommodate a little larger enrollment.
Thanks.
Yes, Dr. Taylor?
Just as a, as a follow-up then, so say for a school like Duncan or Cannon, for an example, built the same small schools-
Yep.
-but will certainly have that, that high percentage of, of free and reduced lunch, you know, kids, ELL programs and so on. You would expand on those schools and add to those to allow-
Yeah. Again, we didn't go in-depth on each of the schools to look at what capacity to expand each of the schools are, but we believe that there would be the ability to add, again, very targeted additions to each of these inner core schools that would, again, sort of create specialized program space, so that you free up classroom space to be classroom space.
Were you able to do any kind of an analysis? I know you mentioned cafeteria space and so on, to see if those buildings can-
No, we didn't. Our analysis did not go that deep.
Okay. Thank you. That's good.
Well, you had me up until this part. So, I mean, this, there's a lot going into these decisions with the, with the elementary schools, and so I'm wondering if, all right, did you take a different perspective when you looked at the elementary school? So, for example, you list all the pressures. I mean, don't we have those pressures in the middle and the, and the high schools? So, what's different?
Well, historically, you know, as, as growth has gone from the elementary to the middle school level, there seems to be some attrition, and I, I don't know why that is. I don't know what the, the causes of whether that's simple student mobility or job, job transience that's happening in the, in the marketplace, or if parents are making other choices when they get to the, the middle school level. But there seems to be some, some level of drop-off in enrollment going from the elementary to the middle school, and certainly from the middle school to the high school. Those are areas where you do see more transience than at the elementary level. So, dealing with the elementary level, you know, the pressure while it was greater, the newer schools on the outer periphery of the district are, they have the capacity to handle that pressure more than the, the schools in the core of the district. And that's why we, we felt it was a reasonable response to, you know, in essence, take, take advantage of that ability to deal with that pressure on the outer edges of the district and not just simply go about building new, more new elementary schools.
Mm-hmm.
Now, again, past 10 years out, are you going to have to build new, more new elementary schools? Probably. But we didn't, we didn't go beyond the 10-year horizon, because again, for us, that 10-year horizon is really already getting into some territory that gets to be real iffy.
So, the core schools, have any of those schools been revitalized?
Pretty much they are.
Okay.
Ideally, curriculum would drive this whole thing.
Yes.
But we'd have buildings, all right? So, what we need to do, I think, is check first curriculum, then make the decision as to where, which goes where and how. Let's say that Worcester were turned into an elementary school. It is huge, no ifs, and buts about it. By the same token, it could be two elementary schools that share the same educational campus, and that might do something to relieve other things someplace else. But for me, the most important thing is the curriculum. How is it that we're going to get, deliver the education so that the kids are at their best possible way to get what, what they need to get? I worry about elementary school probably more than anything else. By the same token, I'd rather have a school that's under capacity with smaller classes than one that's way over the top as we've got now. What you're proposing here sounds quite reasonable.
There, and what we're proposing here also does have an ongoing cost to the district, and we addressed that in, in the next slide. It's not, you know, just moving to a multi-track isn't free. There are significant costs that go along with running a school year-round multi-track. And we tried to take that into account when we did the analysis. Again, I completely agree, this is a much bigger issue than just simply saying we have to accommodate enrollment, curriculum, delivery, academic performance, equity, all of these issues come into play when you're looking at trying to solve problems like this. Our analysis tried to just really pull it apart as much as we could in the very short period of time that we did the analysis to try, and again, we're, we're, we're coming in without, without any of the political issues underneath us, without any of the, some of the more difficult issues that you have to deal with when it comes to balancing enrollment in each of these schools. We're looking at it more from a much higher 30,000-foot level, saying, here's what could be done. These are ways that we can accommodate the enrollment that minimize, and minimize is a difficult word, because you're still talking about significant capital investment here, but minimize the capital investment the district has to make, because the district doesn't have capital and doesn't have access to significant amounts of capital. In an ideal world, you just build new schools, right? But that isn't necessarily true.
Well, I worry about elementary schools too. However, having been an elementary principal for, I think, 21 years, what I see and what you're talking about now solves several issues. Two probably, most importantly, the equity issues of the schools within the inner core. By putting a focused investment in them, we give the neighborhoods a strong message about the support that we have for whomever you are, wherever you are, and wherever you live. Additionally, if you were putting in, if you take a look at what was done with Sierra Vista, that's exactly the message that occurred there. Most parents want to maintain that neighborhood school no matter where you live within a city. By opening up two or three of those schools, including Worcester, to, to be able to develop what used to be called magnet schools-
Yep.
-the issue then is that we would, in fact, by providing high-level instruction in specific designated areas for elementary children, also provide other opportunities for all the families throughout this community. For example, let's just say that we put together a gifted and talented elementary school. We now have schools within a school. So, I mean, and, and you're right about all of these issues do need to be vetted by everyone within the community to take a look at how are we best going to do what we're best going to do. But I also believe that this opens an opportunity that I personally have been talking about since I moved into the Bernice Matthews neighborhood, and that is to say, having more options, not only for those children within the neighborhood, but options that bring other families into the neighborhood to utilize those facilities because of the dynamic approach that we're using to education that would serve all children. So, I thank you for all of this.
I have, I have something to, you know, you keep talking capital, 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 and, and capital's a major, major problem. We, this legislature put together the committee right now that's looking on the tax initiative for 2016. However, I think that our district's got to go about setting the curriculum, then defining what buildings and what we're going to look at, how much it's going to cost to do that program over the next 10 years, and develop a good program for whatever this committee comes up with as far as taxes, if, if we can afford this or we can afford that. But I think we really have to make some decisions ahead of time, so that we know what, and parents are going to have to sell the tax initiative, since the school district is, our hands are tied, we can't do it. But so that it's easy to sell on an educational value, equity value, and, and a program like you're putting out today. So, I think we have a lot to look at, but you surely have a well-thought-out plan here.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Tim, I want to thank you for the information you provided, and I jumped ahead a little bit to look at the kind of investment cost projections. I don't want to steal your thunder, so I'll let you say what that cost might be. But here's a thing that's shocking to me, is we've been giving a message about what our needs are, and we need to build these schools, and we're going to grow this way, but we aren't giving a vision. I think that this is only one solution, and it provides a vision, because we're going to do a whole lot more under this plan than what we've created internally, building a handful of schools if we went with our plan. This is a better vision. This talks about being good stewards of our community, because that's very important. We know that investing in schools in the core is going to be good for business, is going to be for residential, it's going to be good for populations in those areas. We know that also helps reduce crime rate. We know all kinds of things that that investment does. I think that what's important as we go forward and you finish your presentation is, we understand we don't have the money, but this is a better way to get it. It's a, it's a different way to cast that vision, so to speak, because that's what the community wants to hear. They know we need schools, and we're just saying, we need three new high schools, we need two middle schools, we need an elementary school. Oddly enough, we're not even proposing necessarily an elementary school in the South Reno under this proposal. Possibly, but that's where a lot of people think we need one. So, it's about changing a conversation, selling a vision. This, this project or this report that you put together goes a long way in trying to sell a vision, and I think that's the key driver to what you're doing here. I really like the, you know, the effort that was put in. Some of the things or ideas, I don't think any of us would have thought of, repurposing schools, repurposing the schools to do that. Not everybody's going to be a fan, but again, we can do, we can do a lot more for the same amount of money under this proposal. A lot more. We're going to affect a lot more students doing something along these lines. So, even if we don't adopt it, it's certainly a way that we should look at going, you know, some variation of, you know, specifically, I would look at doing something different with Pine. I think maybe Pine could be, I don't know how people feel about a two-story elementary school, but make that a big elementary school and move kids to Worcester, something, but it's a step in the right direction, and one I think that is very valuable, your expertise to the, to the board in that report is awesome. So, thanks very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Move on and try and finish this up.
Okay.
So, just a couple of things that I just want to touch on, and we've talked a little bit about this. Again, there are other pressures, and, and I think President Mayor, you, I think you expressed them, as well as Board Member Rosenberg. The, the notion that this has to be a much more holistic solution, and we absolutely agree with that. But again, we think we've tried to address as much of that as we could in the short timeframe that we were involved in this. So, IEPs, additional, you know, there's a trend line in the IEPs. That trend line is very significant at the high school level. We're seeing much, much more growth in terms of the number of students with IEPs at the high school level. There is growth at the elementary school levels, but it's very sporadic. It goes up and down, school by- It goes up and down, school by school, year over year. So it's harder to predict at the elementary and middle school level what that's going to have, what kind of impact that's going to have on the facilities. Because the more students who have IEPs, the more students that you're dealing with specialized program needs. That requires specific spaces to do that. And that's going to either take away classrooms, or you're going to have to create classrooms to handle that. But at the high school level, the trend line is very significant. It's going up, and it's going up at almost every one of the high schools across the district. As I said, the 2.4% growth model, that just pushes everything up five years, if that happens. We've talked about equity, but you know, certainly some of the issues in terms of dealing with a diverse population of students and making sure that diversity is balanced across the district has to be looked at in any sort of analysis like this. And we're looking at raw numbers, we're not. So all we know is it's a number on a piece of paper. So as I said, you know, really the capacities are going to really hit the high schools and middle schools hard. Actually, I apologize, that's wrong. I should see the elementary schools and middle schools first, and then getting into the high schools. Because the elementary schools are already facing it. That's wrong on my presentation, I apologize for that. I mentioned, you know, year-round multi-track costs money. And what we've heard from district administration is about seven and a quarter million dollars a year. So over the span of this 10-year study, you're talking about a $70 to $80 million investment on operational costs to do this year-round multi-track. It's not free. So that has to be taken into account. Now, just to compare that from a capital investment standpoint, you know, if you're looking at $80 million, that's roughly the same cost as three elementary schools. Which would not, three elementary schools would not solve the capacity problem that you have in the district. And they're two different budgets anyways. So how would we do this? These are just, what we've got here in terms of these timeframes, they're not meant to be, you know, it must be one year, two years, three years. These are really just relative timeframes and just sort of meant to say, this is kind of the priority level of doing, making the investments. So really adding on to Demontan Ranch as soon as possible, and then going to that replacement school for Hugg and Sparks. Because once we do that, that frees up the existing facilities, it sort of helps start the domino going down, downstream. You know, multi-track on the schools, that's going to be happening probably over time, it's starting to happen already as you're facing enrollment pressures. Converting Sparks into the middle school, you know, comes kind of down the line a little bit. Making that core investment in reinvestment in the center of, center-city schools. Really looking at that kind of in that middle part of the timeframe, three years, five years. Converting Sparks and Dilworth, well, you know, again, the students need to move into the, the middle school students need to move into Sparks High School as it's converted before you can convert Sparks Middle and Dilworth Middle. So it's just sort of, it's just natural. The new Worcester coming a little later, the new elementary school in the south coming a little bit later. And then the new middle school is really happening towards the end of the program, you know, out there in the five, six-year range. Which is going to put some pressure on the middle school level, and that may need to move up. But again, when you're looking at what, what your actual capital cash flow can be in a program like this, whether or not you can accomplish that all in a shorter timeframe. And then really, the last piece would be the, a new high school up in the North Valleys. So as I said at the beginning of the presentation, we put together just some basic, and I will, I will say, these are very broad-brush cost parameters for something like this. So three new high schools, $135 million apiece, about $400 million investment. $135 million is a bigger number than what Mr. Etcher's been using in terms of the cost of a high school. We're actually including, you know, acquisition of land, water rights, all of the stuff that goes along with it, not just simply the construction cost of the building. Because there is a whole bunch of other costs that come along with developing a new school. Demontan Ranch, about a $30 million investment to expand that school. Again, it's fairly straightforward, and actually that one, like I said, could go, that could go very quickly and not have too much of an issue with it. The two new middle schools, about $60 million each. I don't know if I'm pressing this right or not, but. There we go, new elementary school, about $25 million. Converting Sparks, about putting $40 million into that existing high school. Now, is $40 million the right number to put into that? It's a ballpark number. We think there needs to be some investment in the existing school, because it is an older facility, it's going to need some, it's going to need some care and commitment to it. Convert the existing middle schools into the elementary schools, less need there in terms of what's going to have to be done. Repurposing Hugg and Rizley. And then the core school investment, about $100 million into the core city schools. And then finally, you have to accommodate for inflation in anything that you're looking over 10 years. And what we typically do is we go to the, what we classify as the midpoint of construction. So we went out seven years into the program, and we use about an 8% escalator on an annual basis for construction costs. Currently, construction costs are escalating somewhere between 6% and 12% per year because there is so much building activity across the United States. Material costs are rising a little more than 6% per year right now. Labor costs are, you know, very determined on the general location. So that puts the total investment at about $835 million for what we presented here in our recommendations. Still a lot of money, when you come right down to it. So that's really the, my presentation. Again, I appreciate having the opportunity, having worked here in 2004 and 2005. You know, I've come to know the district quite well and enjoy the opportunity to come back and, and see how things are going. I do believe that, you know, what we learned in 2004 and 2005 did help us make this analysis a little more quickly. But again, I will fully admit that we based it entirely on enrollment data. We did not try to look deeper into the public issues and some of the political issues. And though we tried to address some of the, the bigger academic issues that we believe are always present in, when you're doing something like this.
Thank you very much, although I got to tell you that inflation may be a little wrong because of the lack of labors to do building. The bids, there, some of them won't even be bid on in the general population right now because of the lack of a labor force. So I think we got to get a jump on this, and that, we got to pass that tax.
I would say, though, that there is, right now, nationally, there is, the construction bubble that we're seeing right now is beginning to relieve. And certainly.
Oh, it is?
Yes. And with the, the reduction in oil prices, you know, one of the biggest issues putting pressure on construction labor was the oil market. And the exploration in North Dakota and Texas was really sucking up a lot of labor. They're all ready to work. So, so that, that has been beneficial to the labor market. I will still say the labor market is still tight, there still is a lot of construction around the United States.
Well, we sure appreciate you coming with this study today. And I want everybody to know that this is just a study. It's not, we're going to spend $835 million tomorrow and build all these schools, but we appreciate it. Dr. Taylor?
I guess, just two things. Yes, I want to echo everybody's sentiment, and thank you for all your work in challenging us to think in brand-new ways that we would no way have come up with, as Trustee Smith says. So two comments, one, I would, before we wrap the whole piece up, I'd love to hear staff's reaction. Maybe hear, hear from Pete's office and all the work that he's done, that's the one hand. But before I say that, I have to say this. As we make our decisions, and we haven't yet, I think some of the, I would be remiss if I didn't mention, if we look at closing Hugg High School, and I don't say this because I went to Hugg, but I know this because I went to Hugg. Hugg is more than a school to that community. It represents a whole lot more to, maybe I should be talking to my colleagues. It represents a whole lot more to that, to that, than that, to that community. So we want to be mindful as we look at repurposing that or closing that, or whatever the case may be. It would, we want to continue this in the positive message that, that Trustee McCrory mentioned, that Dr. McCrory mentioned, that we care about the inner-city schools and building them up, the inner-core schools, and building them up and making that investment. I think you think that part, that needs to be a part of the conversation as well.
Before Pete starts talking, I'm going to ask the head staff person if she wants to make some remarks first.
Well, thank you, John. First of all, thank you, your presentation was wonderful. And I can tell you, when Pete sat down with me the first time to look at it, he said, put your seatbelt on, Tracy. You're from the academic side of the house. But one of the great things is that we face this challenge. We have an amazing opportunity as, to look at 10, 15 years down the road, how we design academic content and get more alignment. When we talk about magnet schools and think about performing arts, starting in elementary, feeding up to the Demontan Ranch, and all the varied opportunities. It's going to be an amazing time for us to do some amazing things for kids. So we got to go slow so we get it right. But I think this will be a challenge, but I think at the end of the road, there's going to be some powerful things that we can do as we look at the diverse needs of our students in there. And what they're interested in, as we look at Tesla and how we can foster that early on, when we talk about college and career readiness. That career piece, looking at how we really get into that in elementary school, so we start fostering that love and that alignment. So I think there's some excitement about how we do it. We don't know how it's going to look, but casting this vision as we do this work will be very crucial. And so I think that there's a lot of work ahead of us. But when we think about the 64,000 kids we serve, we're going to do the best job to make sure that we provide them with ample opportunities for academic success. Now Pete.
Pete, that's our chief operating officer again. First, I guess, I'd like to say that, just absolutely amazed at how quickly they were able to produce this report. Like I said, it was mid-August, actually, when we reached out to Tim and the Cunningham Group. And the effort they have provided to the district for a relatively modest $25,000 contract, I think is just amazing. So I first just want to thank Tim and his group. Second, I believe the report and the recommendations, you know, and the priorities are a great springboard, as you said, to a meaningful conversation, not only with you, but with the community, about where we're going as a district. It addresses some of the issues that I know are important to all of us, and mainly the managing growth, rather than continuing to chase growth and providing increased equity within the district. I think we all recognize that with our current financial situation, it's going to be harder and harder for this district to continue to put the vast majority of our resources into building new schools in new suburban areas while our inner-core schools just get older and older. So I think this, this report really addresses that. But we also know there's going to be no easy and painless answers to this, because even if the money came tomorrow, we're facing overcrowding issues that we're going to have to deal with, and we are dealing with. And it's not going to be easy, and it's going to take time, obviously, to implement this. And we know there's a lot of community needs out there for new schools, and you just heard the report of even his recommendations where we should build schools. Well, you're going to hear in a second that, you know, where property tax revenues are starting to go up a little bit, you know, just based on the growth and based on the fact that we've had no bonding capacity the last few years. We should have been building schools the last couple of years, we know that. And so now that we haven't been able to build schools, the pressure's getting greater and greater. And as we start getting a little bit more revenue coming in, the question comes up, what school should we build first? And I agree with, with Trustee Smith's comments that, you know, we've been saying, well, here's our biggest pressure points right now. But we haven't had a plan to say, where does that money need to go? What school needs to be built first? And so I think that this is a great springboard, again, to start having those conversations on where should we put our very limited resources. And hopefully, you know, we will get more resources as we go forward. But right now, I'd say that this is almost conservative. I think what he presented to you today could easily be said this is conservative, based on several factors. One is, as he said, this is based on 1.7% population growth. And we all know that could easily become 2.4, it could easily become more than that. His analysis also utilizes all the existing portables that we have in place. So we have a lot of portables that are 30, 40 years old, he's using that capacity. So we're going to have to deal with that, replacing portables and replacing the capacity that's out there. It also deals with enrollment. You know, as, as we've talked, spent a lot of time talking about, you know, we look at classes versus classrooms. We have 35 of our 62 elementary schools next year that will be offering more classes than they have classrooms. So we are over capacity as a district when we start looking at the classroom utilization. So I think when we start talking about, you know, multi-track year-round, it's a painful decision, I realize that. But I think when we're already looking at 35 of our elementary schools that are already over capacity, then the recommendations he's making start making a lot more sense. So I, I just want to kind of give those comments, I know we've been looking at this. We're going to continue working with the Cunningham Group and refining these. We want to work with you and the community to get all the input we can, obviously. But I think this is a great day for a great springboard of the conversation, so thank you.
I got the floor. Chair has its privileges. You know, I want to just point out that this sounds like ambition, 835 million. But I have faith in this community. This community is going to come up with a plan that we can raise this money come next fall, next November. And I'm sure that all the parents across this community will be working together to pass whatever this committee from legislature comes up with. And I know that they, they realize that we got to do something. And I have faith in the voters, that they're going to come up and, and help us with, solve this problem. But I want to thank you for getting this spearheaded. Okay, Lisa.
Thank you, President Mayor.
Just remember, you know, I can scratch those first grade grades away anytime.
So, and this may be a question for Pete, but I'll, I'll just ask it, whoever wants to answer. So I'm looking at the implementation milestones. So addition to, to Demontan Ranch, one year. What is, do you mean one year from today, one year from when? What does that mean?
I'll answer that.
Okay.
And again, when we, when we did that implementation, and the intent of that was not to say that one year from now you would add on to Demontan Ranch, or you would start the addition, or it would open. I mean, that was not the intent. The intent was to give a relative timeframe, just to say that the additions to Demontan Ranch are sort of the highest priority item. And part of the reason that we said that was because it's, number one, it's one of the simplest things the district can do. Adding classrooms to that high school, which it's already designed to accommodate. It's a very simple, straightforward program for the district to do that. And it deals with a significant issue that's going to be, that the South Meadows are going to be facing in the very near future. The rest of it is just really intended just to sort of set out a relative, I'll call it a time need, as opposed to a timeframe. Which is, as you move through this, there's certain activities that have to happen before the next one can happen, before the next one can happen. And that's kind of what drove those timelines. Obviously, you can't do anything until you have money. So one year from now may not be one year from now, two years might not be two years. But again, it's just, it's a relative timeframe based upon what we saw as the, the need.
Do you want to add to that, Pete?
No, I think he's right on, and I think this is the conversation, as we were saying, that we have to have to start prioritizing which schools need to be built first as resources become available. I think this kind of starts that. Like Tim said, I don't know the timeframe, but as we start getting the resources, which you'll hear a presentation here shortly about where we feel our finances will be, barring, you know, anything that happens to the public schools overcrowding, repair needs committee, about what kind of resources we have going forward over the next few years.
I think the most important thing is, here it is on paper, approximately what it's going to cost us, and the timeline. So the public has an idea that we're not just putting things off and off and off. Here's what we need, we need the help, let's get it done. Thank you, Tim, thank you.
You know, I just want to say to my colleagues that, you know, when we, when we talk about issues of dealing with overcrowding, and this is one of the things that I feared the most, if I was elected to this board, is how do we handle the overcrowding? Because there's so many emotional contingencies that have to be a part of this plan. But after today, after hearing the presentation from Tim, quite frankly, I'm pretty excited. Because we're taking a step in creating a vision. Now it's not, we need five new schools, and we need them yesterday. It's, hey, we need some new schools, but we want to reinvest in our community. And while we're at it, we might take Hugg High School and turn it into an expansion of AACT, be able to add more equity, add more things for our students. Now I think it's something that our parents, and even our other stakeholders, who maybe their kids are out of the school and live in different states now, might want to participate in and feel better about. It's not five schools now. Now it's a handful of schools, reinventing some other schools, and really solidifying a message that we care and we want to do it right. Point of clarification, we may get it wrong along the way, but our interest is getting it right. I think that's what is most exciting. It's not so much a daunting task anymore. The number is still daunting, because we need to get the money. But we have something we can go to the public and say, look, it's not five schools, it's a handful of schools and a vision. We want to make education better along the way. We don't just want to fill buildings with kids. And that's what I think is really exciting about this report, is being able to do that. And think about how we change. about this report, is being able to do that, and think about how we change the conversation. So when we're going out to the Browns and Double Diamonds and other schools in the future, it's not us talking at them, giving them all these scary numbers, and waiting for them to yell at us. It's selling a vision that we can bring them into, because who wouldn't want to have better educational opportunities for their kids? Having a building itself doesn't do that. It's what we do in all of our buildings, and adding some new ones that makes that happen. So that's what I'm excited about your presentation, is it really allowed me to think in that way. It's no secret that I'm not an educational guy, so I have to defer to others to tell me how that programming works, but this is a message we can sell. And I think it's one that the community needs to hear, what we're going to do. It's more than buildings.
President Mayor, if I could just address that. I appreciate that, Board Member Smith, and I appreciate your calling it a vision. We firmly believe that, you know, every aspect of academic performance and educational vision needs to be incorporated into a building program. Some might find it odd that an architect would walk into a room like this and say, no, don't build any buildings, that actually you should build fewer buildings. But we do believe that there needs to be, that vision needs to be the district's vision, and I appreciate that, you know, this might help form, or might help inform, what a vision for the district is, but the vision truly needs to be the district's vision, and I want to reinforce that. Thank you.
That's great. We're going to take a 15-minute break now, and come back and conclude the rest of our workshop that's outlined in front of us quite a bit. We'll call this meeting back to order, please. Pardon? Go ahead. Okay. Okay, we're going to go down to 3.02, Presentation by Staff and Discussion by the Board Regarding the District's Updated Property Tax Bonding Projections. This is for information and discussing, discussion only. Pete and Tom. Glad to see you, Tom.
President Mayor, President Mayor, I was going to say Superintendent Davis, but she's busy right now, and the members of the board. For the record, Tom Szysinski, Chief Financial Officer, and again, with me is Pete Etchar, our Chief Operating Officer. And so, we want to do just that. We want to update you on the district's property tax bonding, so essentially our rollover bonds that got approved in the last legislative session. So again, this is just an update, it's not new information, other than there are some, you know, some changes that the board needs to be reflective of. I see we got the presentation. So in terms of our rollover bond assumptions, what we want to talk to you a little bit about is our property tax revenue growth, which is now looking like 3%. When we started this conversation with the legislative session and past discussions, we were working with assumptions of about 2% to 2.5%. So now we're seeing the economy improving, we're seeing a lot of discussion about Tesla and all the other businesses that are coming to our community. And as a result of that, housing is starting to percolate and grow. And so with that comes increased property tax revenue. The borrowing capacity of our bonds can be borrowed up to 30 years, so wanted to point that out as a bond assumption. Also wanted to point out that under the new bond rollover legislation, that our bond revenues don't necessarily have to be pledged to due bonds, they can also be used as pay-as-you-go revenue, meaning that as we collect the debt service, if we don't get bonds, we can actually use some of the money to pay as you go, or just use the money without getting debt. Interest rates are scheduled to start increasing, although the Fed kind of slowed things down a little bit, but I think the wisdom out there is that rates are going to start to increase, which then has a little bit of an impact on our borrowing capacity in terms of how much we have to pay. And the last item here, bonds can be issued with approval of the Board of Trustees, the Oversight Panel, and the Debt Management Commission. So with that said, we are actually bringing to you a, our first issuance of bonds under the bond rollover program, I believe, next month. So Pete, I think, is going to be working with the Oversight Panel to go over the needs of what that would look like, and then we'll bring you a resolution to issue up to $35 million in bonds in November. So what we're wanting to update you on is the baseline rollover bond funding estimate, which, under this model, could be $304 million of bonds. Again, we can do, use some of the revenue that we collect in the debt service fund as pay-as-you-go, so estimating about $12 million. To get you a nine-year total of $316 million, when you divide that by nine, it's about $35.1 million, which is an increase over what we've had in the past discussions with you of 20 million. We'll kind of get into the weeds as to what's changed there. It's not really changed, it's just we're moving our schedule ahead. Nothing's really changed. I should emphasize, nothing's changed. Again, I talked to you about the, sure. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
You're going really fast, so you're going to go back, you're going to go, are you just giving the toll reveal, and then you're going to go back?
Yeah, I think I'll, yeah, we're kind of making our way through this, but if you want to stop me or Pete now, we can-
No, I just want to, I'm listening, but I'm, you're going to touch back on-
Yes, I think so. But if we don't, we'll certainly go back and pick up anything that we missed. So, so again, 35.1 million is our updated annual projection for rollover bonds. Again, it's tied in with our 3% growth, and again, the ability to pay as you go under the new rollover bonds. And so that just gives you a little background of where we're at, 35.1. So now the comparison of, again, we were originally talking about the ability to do 20 million versus 35.1. So if you think back in time, when we put this schedule together, we were using a fiscal year 15 to fiscal year 23 model. Now, fiscal year 15 has come to a close. We said in that model that we wouldn't be able to issue any debt, so that number was a big zero on that schedule. And now we've moved that schedule one year forward, where we've cut off the year with a zero and added another year on the tail end of that schedule to get us up to the 35.1. So essentially, what you've done is added $90 million, divided by nine is $10 million a year. Add that $10 million to the $20 million number, that gets you $30 million. And then we talked about the 3% growth that's got us at $35 million, $35.1 million. So again, the schedule has just been updated, we haven't changed anything. Again, fiscal year 15's come to a close, we've added another fiscal year onto the end of the schedule. As Pete likes to say, it's basic math. I like that, I like that statement, it's basic math, to some people.
The 20 to 30 million was definitely just the simple math of taking a zero off from last year and adding a 10, or 90 million on the end. So, I mean, we gained 10 million. I mean, the good news is, is we've gone from 20, as Tom said, to the $35 million range. The bad news is, that zero that we just took off meant we didn't do anything last year. We didn't issue any bonds, we didn't build any schools. As I just said, the last few years have all been, you know, big zeros, so we haven't been doing what we should have been doing, obviously, building schools. So the good news is, going forward, we have a little bit more money. Bad news is, we're that much further in the hole as we start.
So, yeah, I would echo what Pete said. I mean, again, it's, again, it's good news from the standpoint, all we've done is update the schedule, and it's, you know, now we're looking, you know, from where we are today, out nine additional years. We still have the facilities needs that Pete and his team have done a magnificent job presenting to not only the board, but the community, in terms of what our facilities needs are, in terms of our repairs. But I think after watching Mr. Defoe in his presentation today, it shows you the additional investment on top of what we can provide for in this bond program, of what's going to need to be done to address our growth in the school district, whether we utilize the multi-track schools and, you know, build the schools that were recommended in that proposal, or some variation thereof. So I think that's a good place for me to stop and see if there's questions. I don't know if I captured your thoughts, or, okay, great.
I'll add one thing. We have scheduled a meeting for the Oversight Panel for School Facilities, hopefully for October 22nd. We will be meeting with them to kind of at least start the process going about issuing bonds. Now, right now, obviously, we're going to be pretty vague as far as where some of that money's going to be utilized when it comes to new construction, because we know that we need to start the process, whether it's planning or land acquisition, we know that we need to start the process. But exactly what schools are going to build, well, that's that conversation we just had, right, on what schools we need to start off with. So lots of conversations to be had. And when, just because you're having a $35 million authorization, doesn't mean you're going to be issuing bonds all at one time for $35 million. We can come back and issue the bonds, that's more.
Yeah, it's just a function of Pete will work with us on the need, and we'll see what we can do with the need. We'll see what the market will bear, so we could, we'll bring you a resolution that will allow us to issue up to 35 million, so we could do it all at once, or we can do it in installments. So, so that's how that works.
Is Oversight Committee in place? We don't have any vacancies on that, or anything?
All the vacancies that we had have been filled, so we're good.
And Dr. Taylor's R. Lee is on there.
And Trustee Smith.
And Trustee Smith, but they don't vote.
Correct.
They just there to look good.
Make it for me, yeah.
Is that it?
That's all we have.
Okay, I just got a couple of public comment cards here. There's one that wanted to speak on 301, 3.01, so I'll let her speak on that at this time. Annette Miller?
Now, I thought, that's mine.
Do you want to wait till the end of the show, or now, or what?
It doesn't make any difference.
Okay, we'll wait till the end of the, at the end of the meeting, we have public comment. And how about Shane Stacy Griffin?
I can go at the end, too, that's fine.
At the closing remarks? Okay, I'll keep them here if they don't fall off. If they do, let me know. Okay.
Another one's left.
Is that it? Any other questions or comments? Okay, thanks a million to get in us that 90 million. Okay, we'll go on, you're the next item, I take it, because you haven't got up and ran for the door.
We'll switch speakers, though.
Okay, this will be 3.03, Presentation by Staff and Discussion by the Board Regarding Possible Use of Public-Privet Partnership, P3 Projects, whereby private parties would agree with the district to construct, maintain, and own school buildings, and the district would lease the buildings and pay rent for a set term of years, after which ownerships of the buildings would be transferred to the district. For information and discussion only, I think Mr. Smith had requested that this be placed on an agenda, so we're fulfilling that request. Who's first?
Pete Etchar, Chief Operating Officer, and I actually welcome the opportunity to talk today about P3 projects. I know there's been a lot of conversation in the community about different ways of financing and building schools, and as hopefully, you know, we go forward with our critical needs, you know, this is an option to look at. So I want to explain what public-private partnerships are. They're called P3 projects, or Triple P, or P3. There's a bunch, there's a lot of different ways, or P-cubed, I've heard a lot of different ways of calling them. But basically, what P3 projects are, they're a contract between a public sector and the private party. And basically, when it talks about building new schools, it would mean that the private party would finance, design, construct, maintain, and then ultimately transfer the school over to the school district. Now, sometimes it may not involve all of these. A private party could basically finance, design, and construct, and then it could work out an agreement where the school district would maintain. Sometimes they stay in the ownership of the private party for a longer time, but normally, they would transfer over to the public school district. Now, the school district would pay lease payments on the building owner for a set term. You're basically, someone's building you a building, you're leasing it, just like if it was a residential house. So P3 projects are often used, what they use is the operating profits, I'm sorry, from the project, or dedicated tax revenues to pay for the project. They've had mixed results, and it really depends on the dependability of the operating profits or the tax revenues you're putting toward this. What you normally see is it's, they're used for building something that actually generates revenue. So for instance, a water system, you're getting water fees to pay for that infrastructure you just built, or a toll road. Obviously, you're paying the toll, that helps pay for the road. University Nevada just used it to build a dormitory at the University of Nevada. Well, it makes sense, because you've got kids coming in. In fact, they built that under a pro forma of two kids per unit. Now they're putting actually three kids in per unit, so I'm sure it's doing pretty well financially. So I'm sure they're able to pay off that building being built. You've seen a lot of movement around the country in health service facilities, prisons, there was kind of a wave there for a while of private sector prisons. Now, those haven't gone so well, because actually, the pro forma of how much money they're going to generate from the prisoners didn't work out. So you've seen a lot of those closing. So it really comes down to the dependability of the money you're using to pay for. Land is also an issue usually with P3 projects, because private parties can't use eminent domain. And that's basically the power to acquire private property for public use. So normally, with a P3 project, you'll see the public sector entity actually acquire the land, then either sell it, or lease it, or give it over to the private sector party to be used in the P3 project. So in the typical P3 project, the private sector does not provide direct financial contributions to the project. And I think that's really important to state again, because I think there's a misconception sometimes with public-private partnership, that it sounds like the private sector is actually putting a lot of money into the project. That is extremely rare, extremely, extremely rare. In fact, I've found really no examples of that when I was kind of researching this around the country and in Canada, where these are very commonly used. I found a quote in New York, I thought it kind of summed it up well, "Private financing does not alter the fact that the entire cost of the public infrastructure will always be borne by the public. It's just a different way of financing it." And there's advantages and disadvantages, which I'll talk about. Some of the advantages of P3 projects and why it's used around the country is, one is bonding capacity. Typically, the public agency is not incurring any borrowing, so there's nothing going against our bonding capacity, because we're not building a building. We're basically leasing a building. So there's no impact to our borrowing. The construction cost, oftentimes around the country, you see this back east especially, is that they can come in with a lower cost of construction. But what I found was around the country, and the reason why they were able to use lower construction costs with a P3 project is, the private sector could build it differently than the public sector. In the state of Nevada, that's actually not quite true, because thankfully, in this state, we are allowed by Nevada revised statutes to use alternative delivery systems. And we've been using those for many years. Construction manager at risk, design-build, et cetera, are allowable in the state of Nevada for us to build schools. And that's the way we've done all of our recent renovations to schools, and if we start building new schools, I can guarantee you, that's the delivery system we're going to be using. The old system of design, bid, build, really is, is not the way that agencies are building projects anymore. Now, back east, where they're using P3, they are restricted to having to do design, bid, build. And I would absolutely agree, you could build it cheaper with P3 financing. Here, that's not the case. Construction time, obviously, oftentimes with P3 projects, the private sector can build a building quicker than the public sector. And that could be true here.
Before we leave this slide, I think it's important to point out is procurement statutes may require us to do, include our prevailing wage and competitive bidding process. So some people might think that we can get around those rules, but in consultation with our bond legal counsel, they did want us to point out that this is an issue-
They can, they can here, so let's wait until the-
Oh, I'm sorry. I've been derailed by the train. That's the first time I've been derailed by the train.
I had several people raise their hand, they can't hear you back there with the train going by.
Hear me now?
Yeah.
All right, let me do that again. I'm sorry, I just wanted to point out on this slide towards the bottom, where we note that the procurement statutes, including prevailing wage and competitive bidding, must be examined with a P3 lease options to comply with Nevada law. So some people might think that we can get around those rules, but we still have to take that into consideration if, as part of doing a joint project with an outside provider, that we have to look at those rules and regulations as well, or laws.
I just have a quick question, and it may not actually be a quick answer, about the last point on the slide, the private sector can typically construct major projects in less time. I've often been curious about that, just generally. Why is that?
Well, normally, it goes back to kind of the second point, as far as the delivery system they're using to build the project. I don't know if it would be a significant time savings here for us in Nevada, because we can use those construction manager at risk type programs, where back east, they cannot, oftentimes. So I really don't think there'd be a lot of construction time savings, because we still have to build them to the same rules. And I know that this can get tricky, too. same rules. And I know that this can get tricky too, because as Tom said, when you start looking at using public sector funds, and you're using it toward maybe a private building that we're leasing, but ultimately is going to become a public sector building, then you start getting into those prevailing wage laws, you start getting into all the things, and it gets complicated. And I know they ran into this at the Sparks Marina projects, when there is public money being used. I really don't see a lot of construction time or construction cost savings in the state of Nevada. That's my own personal feeling. The disadvantages, and maybe this first one's more of a, just an essential element than it is a disadvantage, but this is really the key bullet of all this, is you have to have a source of long-term lease payments. It is absolutely essential to have a sustainable, self-supporting source of funding to pay for those payments on that building. Like I said, unfortunately, with the Washoe County School District, we don't receive revenue for those kids going into the school, like you would with a dormitory, where they're paying rent, you know, to live in that facility, or we're not receiving tolls, or we're not receiving any revenue. So we have to have a dedicated source of funding to pay for it. And really, it comes down to if we had the money to pay for the lease, well, we might have the money to pay for the building, the building. So it, that's the key here. And that's what we're kind of missing here as a school district, is having the revenue source to actually pay for the infrastructure. Because if we don't have a dedicated source of funding, then you could start getting into the district's credit rating, and you're taking that risk saying, well, we're going to pay lease payment, and we're going to commit to that for 20 or 30 years, but we don't know what the future is going to bring. When you build a building, when you sell bonds and you build a building, that's your building. And we don't, obviously, ever want to become Greece or Puerto Rico and default on bonds, but even if you default on bonds, the building's still yours. With lease payments, you have to pay the lease, or it's just like when you lease a home, if you quit paying the lease payments, well, it's not your building, you're out. So that's kind of a difference.
I think we have a question here.
Mr. Smith.
When we, when we lease a building, what fund are those lease payments paid from?
So, um, you, we, uh, we do some rental arrangements now, and so some of them can be out of our general fund, some of them we can do out of, uh, some of our grant funds, and some of them we do out of our capital funds. It just kind of depends on the nature of the, of the, um, uh, lease that we're getting into. So, but, uh, just to echo what Pete's saying, you, you have to have a sustainable source of funds to pay for, for a transaction. So this would be a, a, a transaction of significant portions, as opposed to renting a storefront property or a, a small, uh, two or three office building. This is in a school at the end of the day, so it's, you, you've got to have a sustainable source. Obviously, our general fund couldn't absorb a, a lease payment of this magnitude. Um, so you'd have to look at the other sources. So again, you have to go back to say, we, we still have to, you know, you could look at your rollover bonds, but we've already said that those rollover bonds are somewhat at capacity to deal with our repair needs. So then what? So you're still looking for a sustainable source of funds to either lease a facility or build a facility. And hopefully, at the end of the lease, maybe you acquire the ownership of that, uh, building, but that's terms that have to be worked out as part of the arrangement, so.
So some of the leases that we have currently are on, uh, grants or stuff like that, because you can lease it for the term of the grant.
Correct. As, as part of building the grant arrangement, you've provided that I'm going to, uh, lease a building to do that function. So yes, it's built into the grant. You, you have to have approval upfront in order to do it.
Mr. Rosenberg.
I'm very shy about these kinds of things. We had a fire science academy at the university that ultimately cost us 30 million bucks, and we had to keep paying and paying and paying. And it was supposed to be one of those design-build things, that they absorbed all of the risk. Well, the only risk they absorbed was driving over the hill. Um, there's also the possibility of a Hawaii situation, where you have the building, but you don't own the land. That can be poisonous as well. Um, leasehold in Hawaii has stopped a lot of, uh, good construction, particularly where their schools are concerned. They got into that kind of a mess. Do we ever own the building and the land, or is it always a rental situation?
Well, most times they're set up that you would ultimately own the building. It would be transferred over to you after the term of the lease is up. So whether it's 20 years or 30 years, they own the building, and then it's transferred to the school district along with the land. Because normally, the school district would be providing the land to the private developer under a P3 project.
All right, so it's a, it's a lease purchase situation?
Correct.
Yeah, it's probably important to say that school district, to my knowledge, has never done a P3 arrangement. Is that safe to say, Pete, in your knowledge as well?
Not that I've.
Yeah, not that I can ever recall.
Well, the university got stung big time, and I think before we walk into anything, you need to talk to them and find out where it happened, because it was a mess.
The Fire Services Academy was again, an example of maybe not having the greatest revenue source that actually paid for the project. The pro forma didn't work out as they planned, and so then you're right, you are left at the end.
Holding the bag.
Another disadvantage of P3 projects, at least in our environment here, is the higher lifetime cost of the project. Obviously, whenever you introduce a third party into it, they're going to require a return. They're not doing this for free, they're, yeah, they usually have a lower return on these over a longer period, but still, you're introducing a third party in a profit motive. The cost of private sector financing is definitely more expensive than public sector financing, so you're going to have a higher cost of just the borrowing and issuance. And since the facility is privately owned, that third party who owns the building is going to be paying property taxes, because it's not a private, I mean, a public facility at that time, it's a private facility. And then there's...
And we're exempt from property taxes.
And then it's a very complex contractual obligation. Obviously, when you start getting into these, I mean, there's a lot of work to be done, and, and there's a, there's a lot of issues even with the maintaining of the building and how it's being operated. And right now, as you know, we have a dozen schools on outbreak status, and when you start running into this, I mean, who's maintaining the school, and whose custodian is working for? And there's just a lot of complex issues when you start getting into a P3 financing. I mean, obviously, if we had the money, we'd want to build the schools. If we absolutely do not have any, is it something for us to take a look at? Well, maybe if we don't have any other options.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Smith?
Are there any examples of school districts that are doing P3 financing across the state, the country?
Country, yes. State, no. I haven't heard of any K-12 in, in the state of Nevada. Back east, like I said, I saw several examples, especially in the state of New York, that are using P3 financing. Again, the main reasons I saw why was because they felt they would get a better cost, because they could use alternative delivery systems like construction manager at risk or design-build to build the school, rather than doing the traditional design-bid-build. So they were using, um, P3 financing. Uh, those are the main examples I saw. The vast majority, when you look at P3 projects, you're going to see is toll roads and water systems and, you know, things that generate revenue. It's just hard when you're not, you don't have a dedicated revenue source.
But have we not been approached by construction companies here locally to do this type of project for us?
We have definitely been reached out to by construction companies to look at this.
So if we had to do this in an all-peril situation, there are companies who would be interested in coming up with some sort of an arrangement for the Washoe County School District within our community.
That is correct.
So there are several country, companies across the country to do this, this type of work. Because I know I was talking to the superintendent in Arizona, and I forget the district, and they entered into something like this. But it has significant challenges for them down the road now that they're trying to, um, solve, but it still might work for them. I think part of it is just the research on it, and then the part, like, how legal is it for us to engage? So we go back to, to that. Because laws are different in different states, it seems as if, which kind of makes a difference in how they do the operations.
Correct.
And that's, and that's what I was hoping to learn is, you know, what are other people doing? If we had to look at this option, it's at least viable to look at if we had to, because nobody knows what November 2016 holds. Um, and if they say no, we've got some big problems.
Well, we don't say if it passes, we're saying when it passes.
I, I think this is the biggest issue would be though, is if we were forced to go into a situation like this. I mean, it'd be my recommendation, first, you want to build schools and own them, and then you can have them for 100 years and they're your school. If you have to go into a lease program like this, is that you're basically tying the hands of future school boards that have to pay lease boards, uh, lease payments for 20, 30 years. And that means that money has to be generated. And so if you don't have it, like I said, you're going to be, have to vacate the school. So you're obligating either general fund revenues or whatever source of revenue you are obligating, but that's a long-term commitment.
Mr. Rosenberg.
There's another thing though, Pete, it works both ways. They've built a school. It's really difficult to use it for anything else. So there is that kind of a control on it. So we wouldn't necessarily be out there, you know, with our tail hanging in the breeze.
Yes.
I just wanted to say, uh, thank you for doing the research on this and giving us this information. I know it was just kind of a broad brush. Um, and I think the thing that's really valuable for all of us is to continue to look at different ideas and explore options. I think in hearing this, I realized this might not necessarily be something we have looked at too closely, because we've got a lot of things in place that, that are already in the advantages list, and so doing it might bring up more of the disadvantages. So I can sort of see that. But I do appreciate hearing different ideas and different thoughts on how we approach building our schools, because that is such a huge issue for us right now. So thank you for asking for the information, and thank you for presenting it.
I, I agree with, with trustee Frankel. Thank you to, uh, trustee Smith for, for bringing this, and for staff for, for doing the research. I think it's critical that we look, we look at everything, because that's what the public, those are the questions the public are going to ask. You know, have you looked at every single option? So I think this is, this is very good, that we took the time to do the research. I think we need to continue to do the research and add to this, this body of knowledge. I, I tend to agree with trustee Frankel. I, you know, I want to own our schools. I think this, um, makes me feel little uneasy. However, I think it was worth the time investigating. I think we need to continue to have this, this discussion. So, thank you for that.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much, appreciate it. And that brings us now to 401, public comment. Um, Annette Miller, you have three minutes.
There we go. Okay, thank you. Um, I am a parent of a middle schooler, and I came to listen to the, the report, the plan that you guys had for, uh, the growth in the area, because it's a big deal. All of our schools, all our elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools are very crowded. And, um, I had some concerns with this report this morning, because I feel like it was done in a bubble. Um, all of the recommendations and most of the information was based only on, like, current enrollment numbers, not on anything going on in Reno, like, uh, the growth with Tesla coming and all these companies. Um, I appreciated, uh, Veronica's comment that we needed the residential reports, where all the home growth is going. Because what the report sounded like, one of the main concerns to me was that they were pushing a lot of the element, or the school growth into the core, Reno Core, as he called it, when most of the homes being built with families, with children going to these schools, is on the outskirts, in the suburban areas. And in fact, he made a comment in there about, something about, um, chasing the growth out. And without really being able to get into this, because, you know, it was just a few minutes we got to listen to the report, that concerns me, because that's actually where the kids going to school are, and the biggest level of growth. Do we want to bus those kids into the core? Right now, we have a huge problem with busing. And so it, that's what concerns me about this particular report, is it's not taking into consideration any of the constraints that we currently have, and how do we fix that? Um, I think there was some, um, valid recommendations in there, but a majority of it, it's hard to really get behind, because it's not taking into consideration that, some of the real pressure points that we're currently, um, being, um, faced with right now. So I really think that it would be important for the board to bring in more parents of actual children who go to these schools for input, and then to actually maybe, uh, apply some of that input into what they're going to do. If you want to get people behind a tax increase, they're going to have to buy into your plan for the growth, for the schools. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, Stacy Griffin.
Hello again, Stacy here. Okay, so, um, I appreciated the fact that we have, we're looking at milestone dates, one, two, up to 10 years out. However, um, I, I hate to harp on Brown again, but, uh, let's put Brown and the North Valley Spanish Springs in the same category. We have some major issues today. For instance, I actually work with commercial developers, who by the way, do C Mar projects down in Carson and Douglas, that involve single point of entries for their elementary schools in response to the Sandy Hook disaster a couple of years ago. Brown Elementary is so overcrowded right now, with so many students in trailers, there is no single point of entry at that school. That is a problem today. Our contemporaries just down the street have single points of entry. Um, additionally, uh, we're talking about going back to year-round school. I have lived with that for six years, and I am definitely afraid of living with it again. And here's why. I hate to sound like an elementary schooler when I say this, but if elementary schools are going to be put on year-round, then to be fair, all elementary schools should be put on year-round. And here's why. When my daughter was on year-round school, she would have random months off. She would have March, she would have August, I think she had November. There was no community support, there was no summer camps, because it wasn't summer. There wasn't anything for them to do, because the businesses weren't incentivized to open up programs for just two schools in that area. So I think it should be fair. From what it sounds like, we're trying to improve the socio-economic status of our core schools by having parents incentivized to get a variance, drive their child, I'm not sure how, how that would work, but to take the children out of the schools, like , uh, Huntsberger, Brown, Double Diamond, and have them go to the core schools with the carrot being dangled in front of their nose, that they would not have to be on year-round school. But I don't know how that would work out. And, and I think that there was a political, um, potential overlay in that recommendation. I, I don't know for sure, but that's what it sounded like to me. I could be completely off-base on that. But, uh, I also wanted to bring up the builders. I have a pamphlet from Toll Brothers right now at my home, that , uh, they are building over 500 homes in Demone Ranch area right now, and they have a full, one-page spread that talks about how wonderful Washoe County school districts are. And if you move here, your child is going to be in a great, blue-ribbon, Class A schools. That's not true. That's clearly not true. We don't have single point of entry, we have children in trailers, we're talking about year-round, we're talking about double session. So I feel like we need to talk to the builders as well as the public. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Uh, next we have, uh, Dr. Mary Alber.
Hi, you pronounced that very well.
Thank you.
Um, I want to build upon what the previous two speakers have said, in that, um, I think this is a great start for looking at this, what, what we could call a crisis of capacity, and also a crisis of being able to deliver quality 21st century education from today and in the next five years. Because that projection of 1.7% is pretty almost assuredly too low and conservative for what we're actually seeing in the growth and development of the businesses and the buildings. So what I'd like to offer is, and I want to thank Pete and team for an incredible beginning to look at possible solutions, because we're going to have to get extremely creative and innovative to really embrace the crisis and do it in a way that meets every student's needs. Not just the inner, you know, core, but the outer core as well, as the other speakers have said. Um, one thing I would like to float as a, a suggestion is, um, to help us get innovative and creative and think out of the box. There is a competition on the table for building a super school high school, not, for designing it, and being able to earn the money from, um, Steve Jobs's widow, who is putting this out as a national competition. And she's saying, you know, we, we have gone from a Model T to a Tesla in the last 100 years, but our schools have not. We've gone from switchboards to cell phones, mobile phones, smartphones, but our schools haven't adapted. So her call is to say, let's get, you know, get creative and use our innovative minds to invent the, the ideal smart school, super school of the, today and the future. And I would like to suggest that, you know, Washoe County grabbed this opportunity by the horn. I'd love to help do that. Um, and a key element of what I think we need in this district to make that possible is that engagement with your parents, with your community, with your business partners. that engagement with your parents, with your community, with your business partners. With the collaboration, idea generating, buy-in during the design process, you will then get people standing behind it, businesses is standing behind it and say, you know what, I want to sponsor that charter school as a public charter school, not, not private, because I'm, I think Coral Academy is an excellent example of a public charter that has partnered beautifully with private, uh, for their new building, their new high school that they got. It's owned by the previous, uh, owner of that facility. They're doing amazing things with very little money, actually. They have a very active board. I think if we can model our future new high schools that are, that need to be built, that need to be renovated, we can do this, but we need to collaborate very, much more effectively as a community.
Thank you very much for your comments, Doctor. Are there anybody else that has, uh, wants to make public comment? Yes, sir, you may fill out one at the end.
My name is Colin Robertson, and, um, I'm a parent and also, uh, currently President of the Education Alliance for Washoe County. And I guess I just want to say that I think that this is a really great first step. Tim's work is kind of, uh, I think, he's very modest about it, but it's monumental as a task to have accomplished in a little over three weeks' time. Um, and I just want to, I guess, suggest that, um, we won't know where we're going or how we're going to get there if we don't start the conversation, and that is what this, uh, presentation did, I think, in an important way. It's a big, tough, hairy problem that this community faces, uh, that the district faces, and, uh, this is a really important way to begin that conversation, so I just want to, I guess, say that publicly.
Thank you very much. Thank you, and please fill out the card. Anyone else? Okay, see none, we'll adjourn this meeting. Uh, there is a school safety committee meeting at 2:00 this afternoon in this room, for those that are interested, please come.